All right, this meeting of the Select Board on December 12, 2023, is called to order at 6:12 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access. It is very loud. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law, you are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be reported by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. Just for the record, participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, and Joe Fisher. Bill Ramsey is away this evening. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I believe we have three.
Yes, and I'm prepared.
Okay. Ready to take a motion?
I move to approve the minutes dated December 5, 2023.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I move to approve the minutes dated December 6 of 2023.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
And I move to approve the minutes dated December 9 of 2023.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. Do you want to wait till Jim gets here to skip around or? I hate to have him. Is he definitely coming?
Yes.
All right, let's go on to number six and then we can go back. Okay, allocation of 2022 Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities Per Ride Assessment Funds.
So I'm going to ask Anne McNaughton to join us up here for this one. I'd like to formally introduce Anne McNaughton as our new town accountant for the Town of Hingham. She is a Hingham resident and she has over 10 years of experience as a town accountant with other communities. She's also worked on the school side as well and run her own accounting consulting practice. So we're really thrilled to have her join us in this capacity. She's been helping out in an interim capacity for several weeks now and has been instrumental in this whole transition.
Excellent.
Well, thank you, Anne.
Yes, welcome and thank you, Anne. We're thrilled to have you part of the team.
Thank you. So this is something that came to Anne's attention. She was notified by the State Department of Public Utilities of a reporting requirement related to Hingham's 2022 Per Ride Assessment Funds, which I kind of refer to as like the Uber and Lyft funds, just for ease of remembering what this is. We received a total of $7,255.20 in 2023 for the 2022 year. This is based on a fee that the state levies on the number of Uber and Lyft rides that originate in Hingham. And we need to use the funds, the funds need to be used statutorily to address the impact of these transportation services on municipal roads, bridges, and other infrastructure, or for the Complete Streets Program, which is something that Hingham already participates in. Anne reached out to the state to try to get a history of what Hingham has received in the past. And there was a new, there was kind of a change from the Department of Revenue this year that allows the Select Board to spend these funds if we received under $25,000 for a given assessment. The rest of the funds, we have a bank of about, of 32,000 total, including the 2022 funds, and will be recommending through town meeting, you know, spending them in a similar way. But for now, even though it's a relatively small amount of money, we recommend that the Board consider designating them for the Complete Streets Program so that our DPW department and town engineer can use them for that program, which helps provide safe and accessible options for pedestrians in all different modes of transportation.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Anne, for bringing this to our attention. Joe, do you have any questions?
Just to make sure there's no question that the Complete Streets Program qualifies as an appropriate use of these funds.
Yes, it was referenced, that program in particular was referenced in all of the state instructions for reporting, so we do feel confident we can spend it that way.
No other questions?
Okay. Yes, I've reviewed this. I don't have any questions. I think it's a good, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's a good use of that money for the Complete Streets Program, and I see no reason why not to act on it now. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, ready to take a motion?
I move to transfer $7,255.20 of funds from the receipts received for appropriation account established under Section 27 of Chapter 176 of the Acts of 2022, Fund 2173, to the Complete Streets Program, established under Mass General Law's Chapter 901, to be expended under said Complete Streets Program.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Pass as unanimously. Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. You don't want to, probably don't want to start the budgets.
I don't mind, it's totally up to you guys.
Okay.
So we're waiting on the audit presentation?
Yes. So Doug obviously is here, but Jim is on his way from Boston, so I didn't, I didn't want to do it without him if he's making the trip.
He started with 10 minutes, 10 minutes, yeah, so I can chuck it down and, you know.
Do you want to jump down to eight and sort of get?
We don't have Kathy or Ken.
Oh, we don't? Yeah, you're right. Ken is, they're both right.
Oh, they're here?
Yeah. We can.
Okay.
I think everyone was anticipating.
I know.
I saw Ken, do you want me to just go back and?
Sure.
Because then we can just get that thing.
Yeah. He's here? Okay. All right, excellent.
I apologize.
No, no worries. Lots of moving parts this evening.
You're only the second one.
Yeah, we're all a little off schedule tonight, so thank you for being here. So we will move to Agenda 8, Audit Committee Chair Presentation for FY23 Financial Reports. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, Russ. My name is Doug Farrington. I am the Chair of the Audit Committee for the Town. And on behalf of the Audit Committee, which is currently comprised of myself, Katie Goslin, Andrew Sanders as our Secretary, and Wilson Kissler, I am pleased to present our report with respect to the year ended June 30, 2023. The Audit Committee is charged with the responsibility to review the audit process, including the annual financial statements and the reports prepared by our auditors. The Committee met on multiple occasions over the past year to review several reports prepared by Clifton Larson Allen, and I'm joined tonight by Jim Petrowski on behalf of Clifton Larson Allen in the event there are any questions regarding these reports. The reports that we reviewed and approved include the Town of Hingham Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, otherwise known as the ACRA, for the year ended June 30, 2023; the Town of Hingham GAO and Uniform Guidance Reports for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023; the Town of Hingham Governance Communication Letter for the fiscal year ended June 2023, June 30, 2023, I'm sorry; the Town of Hingham Contributory Retirement System Pension Plan Schedules for the year ended December 31, 2022, as they are reported on a calendar year basis; and finally, the Town of Hingham Management Letter for the year ended June 30, 2023, discussing internal controls, ongoing status of previously reported items, and a review of upcoming regulatory changes. Key findings with respect to these reports, number one, and perhaps most importantly, well, there were no material disagreements with management. Number two, this one likely the most important, the audited financial statements received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that a government unit can receive. It indicates that the financial statements were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and that they are fairly presented in all material respects. One material weakness was identified in internal controls over financial reporting in the GAO and Uniform Guidance Report with respect to the reporting of bond premiums. The issue has been addressed by management and is properly reflected in the June 30, 2023 financial statements. That is my report.
Excellent, thank you, Doug, and thank you, Jim, for being here and all of your support. And thank you to the Committee for all the work to get this done. Do you mind walking us through the recommendations relating to IT and Shrek?
Sure.
Okay. And thank you all for having me here tonight. Sorry about the lack of timeliness. I do want to say before I get into things, I want to express my appreciation to the town management that we worked with. Sue Nickerson, who obviously is no longer here, was great help during this audit process, as well as Lori Magner in the Treasurer's Office, Aisha Opang over at the School Department, as well as Kevin Whalen at the Rec Department, as well as the library staff and the support they provided us throughout the year. So it was an overall collaborative process. We appreciate all of management's help as we got through this year. Overall, very smooth process, we were able to issue within accordance with our normal cadence. So the observations in the management letter and the recommendations, if they were severe enough, they would be reported in internal control reports. I do just want to reiterate that these are best practice recommendations, as was the case with previous management letters. So as far as the IT comment, really a few different components here when we're talking policies and procedures. The current policies haven't been updated for a few years, and our recommendations just to have those updated, especially with the IT risks that we're seeing in the IT environment, especially with the certain attacks that we've observed for state and local governments, we do want to recommend the policies be periodically revisited, updated, no less frequent than the annual basis. So there's the comment for IT. Also, as far as the formal user access review risk assessment plan, while there is a current plan in progress, we do want to recommend that that plan be formalized and that those reviews are on a scheduled periodic basis and occur at least annually to make sure that the town's IT risks are properly considered. As far as the Shrek comment is concerned, this has been in the past few management letters, we did note this year that the town did receive an audit, or should say, the Shrek received an audit for its most recent financial statements. There were some communications made by their auditors. As was the case with the prior years, we identified that a year-to-date analysis wasn't performed over all the activities, and that continues to be recommended. We don't anticipate any material findings as a result of that inception analysis, however, as was the case a couple of years back, where we did have a receivable on the town side from Shrek, we do recommend that that activity be looked at from the inception of the Shrek just to make sure that there's no balances either due from the town or due back to the Shrek as a result of that analysis, so.
Great, excellent. It sounds like good news overall.
Yes. Yes.
And just add one point to Jim's last point. My understanding is, and we've got obviously transition in process, but that reconciliation is in process, and that task is, you know, the management's fully aware, and that process has been undertaken, it's just a process that has not been completed.
Okay, excellent, thank you for clarifying that. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, so I appreciate your focus on the information technology, security. I just know, as a member of the Select Board, I am often bombarded by the IT department to make sure that I am observing appropriate security protocols. So I know that they are on top of it, but to the extent that we need documented procedures in place, we'll make sure that that happens. That is a focus of this Board, as well as the IT department, and so we recognize the importance. Thank you for bringing that up, but overall, this looks like a very positive report, so thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, okay. Did you want to add anything, Michelle?
Not on the side of the table.
Okay. So I'm, are you ready to proceed?
Yep. Did you want to see if Anne wanted to add anything?
Anne, do you want to add anything?
I really wasn't involved in that process, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I think Sue Nickerson, this was one of her final deliverables and big projects, so we're certainly grateful to her for finishing this.
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, I'm ready to accept a motion.
So I move to accept the fiscal year 2023 financial statements and management letter as submitted.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Pass as unanimously. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, if you want to stay up here, Doug and Jim, is to consider approval of the agreement with Clifton Larson Allen, LOP, for audit services for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2024, 2025, and 2026.
Okay, so this recent, this current fiscal year ended June 30, 2023, concluded our second three-year agreement with Clifton Larson Allen. The Committee reviewed, discussed, and is in a position to recommend to the Select Board and to the Town Administrator an additional renewal for the subsequent three years ended June 30, '24, '25, and '26. Our primary basis for this recommendation, number one, we have found Clifton Larson Allen to be extremely professional, thorough in their approach, and within the appropriate professional standards, has been an outstanding and strong partner for the town. Our secondary reason is, in this year of transition away from Sue as our former town accountant toward Anne as our new town accountant, we feel that there is much to be, much to be offered by CLA in terms of the information and knowledge and experience that they have garnered through their current six-year tenure, and I think that there's a lot of value to Anne in the transition process, to having them onboard through the transition process. So on that basis, the Audit Committee recommends we renew the Clifton Larson Allen for the next three years.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you for the recommendation, and certainly for the partnership, Jim, as well. Could you speak to the increase in the fees and just kind of explain the rationale around that?
Sure. So around the time of the last restructuring, which was, I believe, around 2020, there was a three-year renewal, so through the course of our contract, we did see significant market inflation as part of the rates in the current market with the industry that we operate in. So that's really the driver, is catching up with that inflationary increase as far as identifying the market rates and then setting that quote for the increase. It's really in response to the inflationary increase.
Okay, thank you. Joe, do you have questions, comments?
Just, so following up, so this contract, the payment term is $408,800. And how does that compare to where it was? I understand it's higher, but how much higher?
I can probably answer.
Oh, go for it.
So I presume that number that you're quoting is for the full three-year period?
Correct.
So for the prior three years, for the years ended June 30, '22 and '23, we experienced between a 2% and 3% increase of the fee from the initial year of the three-year contract. The current year proposal of 11% is obviously a significant increase, and I think as Jim described, it is intended to kind of catch up from those two years of very low increase. And then the current increases in the subsequent two years are still in that 2% to 3% range. So I think, generally speaking, it's, in the aggregate, if you look at it on a three-year period, it's approximately, I would think, a 6% or 7% increase.
So if there was no increase at all, which is, I'm not proposing, I'm just, so, and so the current price is the $1,19,300, so over three years, that would be $357,900, basically $358,000, and this is $408,000 on aggregate over the three years. And given what you've said, this seems an appropriate price for the contract, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing? So what you guys had before you is a standard contract that we put together for all of these things, and Jim let me know that CLA's legal team is reviewing the contract. So if you don't mind, I did want you guys to hear Doug's recommendation from Jim tonight, but because they're still reviewing it, if you don't mind holding off on voting on it or signing it, maybe we'll just put it on the next agenda until we get it back from the legal team to make sure there's no changes or that the changes are acceptable.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or, okay, any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, excellent.
When do you expect to hear, that we'll hear back?
I would expect, I would expect in the next few days.
Okay, so we could bring it up at the next.
Yeah, so we'll plan to put it on the agenda on the 19th.
Right.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's do the, all right, next, let's do, consider approval of the agreement with Gordon Chevrolet Incorporated doing business as Colonial Municipal Group for 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive vehicle for the Harbor Master. Harbor Master Ken Corson here, and Kathy Riley. Is the volume painful? Is the volume really painful? It feels, are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry if it's a little loud. It has to be that loud for people to hear.
Okay.
On that hole.
At home, okay. All right, keep going. All right, do you want to explain, Ken, what's in front of us here?
Sure, good evening. This is a replacement vehicle for the Harbor Master Division. It's replacing a 2017 Ford Interceptor Utility, basically an Explorer vehicle. This is a 2023 Tahoe. It's basically a built-out police vehicle. It has some, basically, what you'd see for a police vehicle, it has some minor changes from that to accommodate the needs of the Harbor Master. It doesn't have like a cage for prisoners or anything, but it does have some other modifications, different radios. It has some charging abilities and different things to meet the needs of the Harbor.
Okay, and this, how is this being funded? Was this approved by capital?
That's correct. It has a capital, it has two capital appropriations that'll be funding this, and then there's a small amount, about $2,000, that'll be coming out of our operating budget to put in a converter to charge radios and some other accessory devices that weren't initially planned for.
Okay. And the timeline, the 28 weeks that is for making those modifications, is that right?
The upfitting, yeah. The vehicle is available on the lot, but we have to go through that timeline for putting all those things, the extras onto it.
Okay. Joe, any questions or comments?
Is this replacing an existing vehicle?
That's correct.
And what is happening to that prior vehicle?
What happens with the existing vehicle is still being determined. We, it's, if we trade it in, we get very small amount of money for it. We've had very good luck with auctions in the past year. Another option is to replace an older or vehicle that's in more need of repair or replacement, so it's something that we're in the process of working with the chief to determine what the best way to cycle vehicles and replace are.
Okay. So when will that decision be made, do you know?
After this vehicle is received.
Okay, so the capital requests were not dependent on a trade-in value or anything?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Okay, no other questions?
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to proceed.
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Gordon Chevrolet, Inc., doing business as Colonial Municipal Group for a 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive vehicle for the Harbor Master in an amount not to exceed $66,571.43.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Pass as unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being flexible with the agenda.
You're welcome.
All right, you ready to start the budgets? Okay. So next on the agenda, FY25 departmental budget requests. We are going to go through a number of budgets this evening. This is the first, we're seeing it and discussing it. We won't be voting on it this evening, but these are the level services departmental budgets put forward by the department heads.
That's right.
Right? Okay.
So I'll ask if Anne wants to join me again up here, just for some of them. And Tom regrets not being here tonight, he's not feeling well, so he.
Yes, he's feeling better, and no one else gets him.
Right.
Well, this is also the first year that we are implementing, we're using our new ClearGov budgeting system or budgeting software for this, so what you have typically reviewed in the past with departments on PowerPoint is now captured in our digital budget book. So that's what I'll be reviewing on the screen.
Great.
And as you pointed out, Liz, that these are the level services requests from departments, so kind of our preliminary budget requests. We asked departments to give us a plan for what they would need in FY25 in terms of dollars to provide the operations and services that they're currently providing in FY24. When Tom comes back in the next few, several weeks, or in the next month, to present the Town Administrator-recommended budget, that will fit within the parameters that in the FY24 through '28 Financial Management Plan, what we call the MOU, in terms of the 3.5% growth cap for the municipal budget. So I just wanted to make that clear to people.
Yes, thank you.
So the first budget we have tonight is Town Hall. I think you guys are very familiar with the facility here and with our Town Hall Maintenance Team. This facility was an old school that's about 100, almost 140,000 square feet that houses most of our town departments. It also houses the Center for Active Living, formerly known as the Senior Center, our Rec Department and facilities, the school administrative offices, our police station until the spring of '25, when they'll be moving over to the new public safety facility, and a regional 911 dispatch center known as Shrek that serves four different towns. So we have a team of three full-time and one part-time staff that do all of the cleaning and maintenance for the building and keep track of, you know, repairs and capital projects that need to take place. They also support some of our other municipal facilities around Hingham, including 308 Cushing Street, GR Hall, the new property at 30 Summer Street, et cetera, and a lot of special meetings and events, town meeting and other functions as needed. I do want to point out that a portion of, so Shrek, the 911 dispatch that's based here, a portion of their kind of reimbursement or rent to the town offsets this budget because the Town Hall Maintenance Team is maintaining those. So what you'll see here is kind of the new format for these. We always do an overview of the departments. Each department is going to have an org track that just shows you who the team is. Sometimes we put images. I think the one on the right is the definition of other duties as required sometimes when you take a town job. That's one of our members of the team, and he did give us permission to use that photo.
Is that where you should?
With some of our Center for Active Living staff. They're all wonderful. And then the system, one of the benefits of ClearGov is it's pulling all these numbers in charts for people to understand from the operational budget model. So you'll have a couple of standard ones here, where you're going to see 10 years of data in terms of what we've budgeted compared to what we've spent, and we've included some notes to clarify that, but it helps people kind of add a glance to see how things have trended over time. One thing to keep in mind is that for any departments that have capital items like Town Hall, that's why some of this fluctuates, because the capital's in there, so it's not a clear kind of trajectory. Down here, you'll kind of see the division between salaries and wages, called personal services in the system, and expenses for FY25 for the budgeted year. And then another chart down here that's interactive, where you can see the breakdown between the different categories of, again, salaries and wages, expenses and capital, and you can play with the functionality if you just want to see how salaries have grown, it's like this, don't worry, that looks crazy, but it's because we added a position a few years ago. If you want to just focus on capital, so you can just kind of, I like some of the interactivity of, if that's a word, of the system. And you can also change different views depending on what you want to look at. At the very bottom of these pages, it'll give you kind of a budget snapshot. What we've included here are two years of actuals, so what we spent in FY22 and '23. The FY24 budget, which we've included both the adopted version, that's what you see in Article 6, and the amended version, which includes Article 4, which in other words means the cost of living adjustment. That's distributed among the departments to kind of get the true salary cost for FY24. Then you have the preliminary department request for the budgeted year '25, and a column that shows you the percent change between the '25 proposal and the '24 adopted budget. We were also able to show some of the notes here that explain how some of the line items have changed, so this gives a good snapshot for people trying to understand what goes into this budget. Again, it's broken down by personal services, by expenses, and then at the Again, it's broken down by personal services, by expenses, and then at the bottom, there's capital. And just a quick note on capital, all FY twenty-five capital here is going to look, is going to appear as zeros because that is built in a separate part of the system and will need to go through the capital at lay committee process before their final recommendations are, are included here. So it's not that no department is getting capital in twenty-five, it just comes in later in the process. So I mentioned that for this particular budget, Shrek contributes to the salaries and helps offset that. We have increased overtime just based on an average of what's happened the last two years to try to cover, cover that accurately. We've seen a pretty big increase across the board in utilities this year, so HMLP raised its rate six percent in June of twenty-three and has let us know that they're going to raise it another six percent in June of twenty-four. So that's a twelve percent increase that you'll see across the board. And our natural gas costs increased eighty-five percent from one provider in particular, so it's been a little bit difficult to absorb those. The other thing that you'll see in the Town Hall budget is our preventative HVAC maintenance contract that is used to maintain, we have seventy heat pumps in the building, most are original from the renovation in ninety-seven. We've replaced about a third of them at this point through capital, but that increased eight thousand dollars, we went out to bid. And that was the lowest bid received, they had kind of signaled to us that, just based on inflation, they were going to need, they couldn't maintain the old contract, which was just under ten thousand dollars, so it's now about eighteen.
Michelle, I, you said that our natural gas bill went up eighty-three percent of. So is that an increase in price, or is that we're using more so that we're spending more?
No, so that's an increase in the rate, so all, most of the town departments are on a, a contract that we've got through the school, through a statewide contract. And that was for Direct Energy, which is, I think the provider, I think they provide the gas and natural grid and others deliver it, so there's two separate vendors that are often involved. But for the Direct Energy piece of it, their rates went up eighty-five percent. It was a three-year contract or a few-year contract, and now we're on a new several-year contract, so the rate is locked in, but it's really difficult to absorb an increase like that. Fortunately, the natural gas lines, like dollar-wise, aren't as big as some of the other line items in here, but it's still, it's still quite a big increase to try to, to deal with. We got some good news on vehicle fuel rates, so those, those are also locked in through the school department, through other contracts, and those were I think lower than we expected, so that's good, it's always just trying to balance all of these different things. Under Art's leadership, about two years ago now, we are able to complete a green communities project to replace all the lights that you see in this room and, and throughout most of the building with LED lights. And doing an analysis, excuse me, of our kilowatt hour usage, it, it dropped nine percent between the year that we installed it in the following fall, which is excellent. The rates are going up, so it kind of offsets some of those savings, but it's still important, we're trying to make progress towards some of our sustainability goals where we can, and this is quite a big facility, so we're picking away at this here. And then just a couple notes, we moved a few items to the IT budget, excuse me, including our copier lease and our telephone line, just because IT ends up managing those things for the building, so having them take over paying of the bills can help them, you know, make sure that we're only paying for what we need for, and it wasn't something that Jeff and his team were, were looking at. But, any questions on Town Hall?
So, so on Town Hall, so it's looking at the first part, it shows a minus six-point-two percent versus prior year. But then I look at the expenses, they're up over ten percent, and it looks like the savings coming in because we're zero on capital outlet.
Right, so I was.
So this is not a real negative.
For any, for any department that's got capital, you really can't look at that bottom-line percentage because the capital's going to make it look better than it is.
Right.
You really have to look at kind of expenses are going up ten percent, and in this case, the personnel are going up six-point-eight percent, so we obviously have some work to do there to fit into the three-and-a-half percent.
Right.
But that's something that we're looking at overall for all the budget requests, not necessarily that each individual department will come under that.
Great, okay, nothing else?
All right. We are moving next to legal services. Pull this up. Legal Services, as you know, is administered by our office, the Select Board Office, and by Tom, the Town Administrator. The town has four main areas of outside legal counsel that we use, but, but we also have other specialists that we use for more specific items, so we have these four main areas of general counsel, real estate counsel, litigation counsel, and personnel or, or labor counsel. And so we always do an analysis of just what the, kind of what the percentage breakdown was on a, on a yearly basis for that. We, this is an area that we've identified in the past as a structural deficit. So we've taken some steps over the last few years, in FY twenty-two, the town added some funds to the legal budget, we raised it to eighty percent of the five-year average to try to fill that gap and have tried to put some other measures in place to bring the expenditures down. Sometimes, there are many things, parts of the legal budget specific, or particularly related to litigation and, and other items that can't always be anticipated. But we're doing our best to control these costs where possible. And there's, it's just a one-line item budget for, for the total amount there, so we're recommending holding it steady from twenty-four to twenty-five at three-hundred-ninety-five thousand three-hundred-seventy-two.
Can we look at, not right now necessarily, not right now, but just in the system? So the, I'm looking at the pie chart for the FY twenty-three legal expenses and just the types of legal expenses. Can we see that trend over a number of years?
We can certainly build that in.
Okay.
Yep.
I'd just be curious if, you know, litigation and general counsel, if it, if that's fairly consistent, or you know, if those percentages are kind of changing drastically year to year.
My sense is that the, the personnel one is usually the smallest piece of the pie. Litigation is of, is often the largest one, and then general and real estate kind of, kind of switch, but but we can certainly do five or ten years, and we can add that into you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Do you allocate legal expenses to various departments? So for example, if there's litigation associated with the country club, does it show up here, or does it show up in the country club budget?
So yes and no is the answer. Whenever a, a department or a project kind of has a separate budget, so for example, our enterprise funds like Water and the Country Club
Yep.
typically pay for their legal expenses, but something like litigation is often just charged to the generals, the general budget because it's not anticipated. It's not really the legal expenses I'm talking about, so for example, for the Public Safety Facility and for Foster School, those have separate appropriations and the kind of the normal legal work in the course of doing whatever site work or kind of issues that come up are charged to those projects, but something like litigation is, is typically not.
I understand that, I'm not sure it makes sense, so that, you know, to the extent that an area is incurring significant legal costs, whether it's litigation or regulatory, it's not clear why those costs are not allocated to that section of the budget.
I'd say most of it, the only one that I can think of like is, is the pool litigation at the moment, but because that was tax-supported anyways, it wouldn't make sense to charge that to the enterprise fund. So that's been coming out of here because it wasn't part of the normal curse of that project, and it was a debt exclusion anyways. But besides that, I don't think we've typically encountered too much project-related litigation, so it's, it's fallen to the general legal services budget.
Got it, okay.
Okay, that's helpful.
The next two, we kind of take together, our Health Imperatives and the South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center, so I will go to Health Imperatives first. Both of these are nonprofit, nonprofit service organizations that the town contributes to each year, this is based on a town meeting vote from several years ago, and both of these community service providers provide a lot of services to residents in Hingham and surrounding communities, primarily around the areas of survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, and providing emergency shelter and other critical services to, to those folks. So we, we make small contributions each year, there's twenty-seven hundred dollars from two Health Imperatives, and then thirty-seven hundred dollars to the South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center. There's not much else on this.
Yes, I just have a question. Does that need to go back to town meeting at any period of time or after a number of years? To kind of recommit to that?
I don't know, I can, I can look into that. We've been doing it for many years, you can see on these charts that the amount hasn't changed in the last ten years for both of them, the twenty-seven hundred and the thirty-seven hundred, so it's definitely something that we've historically done, but I can certainly look into that.
Okay, and it looks like they do report back how many Hingham residents they've helped. So just curious if that is their required amount, or are they turning, I guess my, my point is, are they turning some Hingham residents away because we, we're not contributing more, I just want to understand?
I don't, I haven't gotten that sense, there's, you can see in this chart that there's some years it looks like we didn't spend the money, and sometimes we end up
Right.
kind of chasing them down, we have spent the money, sometimes it's just been, what you don't see in these charts is anything that was encumbered, so we owe the money, we end up paying it later, like after the fiscal year closes, so we've definitely provided it, but I'm, it's a relatively small amount, so I'm not sure it's holding up any operations, I don't think it's preventing any.
Okay.
But we, we do get information from them each year about the services that they're providing, and we try to ask how many people they've helped so we can get a sense of the impact.
Yeah, great, thank you.
No, no questions.
Okay.
The next one is Shrek, the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, our nine-one-one dispatch center. Again, located in this building, it serves four communities, Hingham, Norwell, Hall, and Fohasset, and the town administrators or managers of those communities make up the Shrek Board, the Shrek Board of Directors. So they provide the nine-one-one call-taking, emergency medical instruction, police and fire dispatching services to those communities. They have an executive director, Aaron Smith, a deputy director, four supervisors, and seventeen dispatchers who work twenty-four-seven out of this building, and in fiscal twenty-three, they just gave us these updated numbers, it was almost thirty thousand calls for service in Hingham alone. So each year, the four communities pay an assessment to Shrek to be part of this, just going to go down here, which is based on the community's population and the calls for service that are happening, so Hingham by far of the four is the biggest. But again, they provide a reimbursement for us, which Tom just looked at this year because it hadn't changed in about ten years, so we've just made an adjustment to that. And their reimbursement or their rent offsets some of our Town Hall Maintenance Team, it offsets some of our accounting department that handles a lot of their financial transactions and services. And then the rest is kind of basically considered like rent. They also pay some of the utility costs, there's a separate electric meter that they use so we can make sure that they're covering that piece of their, the building usage.
Okay, so the, the increase here, is that based on a proposed or unexpected increase in calls?
No, so, oh, so every year, we initially budget five percent.
Okay.
And then, once the Shrek Board kind of goes through their budget process and finalizes a number, they'll come back to us, and if we need to make any adjustments, you guys would see that again, obviously, before you vote. But that's typically how we just start as a placeholder.
Okay.
For now. And the increase in rent that we are charging them, that I know we technically pay a piece back to ourselves of, was based on what, what the average cost of the services we were providing back in two thousand eleven or twelve when Shrek first came here, compared to now, we specifically looked at the accounting department. That was a forty-three percent increase over time, so we used that to adjust the accounting and maintenance numbers. And then Tom worked with real estate council to get a sense of what's the going rate for like commercial rent these days, and kind of charged a a bit of a discount there, kind of per square foot here, and that's how we adjusted it, so overall, for FY twenty-five, we're expecting to get about fifty-six thousand dollars from them to offset costs.
Okay.
So you, you mentioned before the increase we've had in utility rates. Are those increased rates passed on to Shrek?
They are, at least for, for electricity, because they directly pay one of the bills there that's noted for their area.
And heat?
I don't believe that they pay other portions of utilities, but we can look at trying to break that out.
So they don't have a triple-net lease?
They don't have one.
A triple-net where, where the expenses, they, they would pay their own expenses?
I, I don't think they pay, other than the ones that we've outlined, I don't think there's other provisions, but we can look at that.
Yeah, I mean, given the increases that you just mentioned, I think that is something we should look at.
Sure.
And then you, you mentioned that Hingham is, is by far the largest user of these services, but is our use disproportionate to our population, or is it consistent?
I don't know, I'd have to look at that to see, to look at the trends over time.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay.
So the next one is the reserve fund. So statutorily, the town is allowed to set aside or to establish a reserve fund for extraordinary unforeseen emergency situations that arise during the year. Our financial policy outlines how much we set aside, and it's point seven-five percent of the operating budget each year. We, so I'm doing those calculations, it's, it's going up to about seven-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand for this year, let me just go down. You can kind of see, obviously, as the budget grows, the, the reserve fund grows with it. We have not had to use it, well, we've had to use it once so far this year, it's actually before the advisory committee tonight, if you might recall, a few weeks ago, we went for seven thousand dollars-ish for a flood in the Town Hall basement. But it is helpful to have this set aside for those types of situations.
Is it, Michelle, is it your judgment that the point seven-five percent is adequate?
I think it depends what the goal is, so in the five years that I've been here, there was one year where, where we didn't need to use all of it, but we typically go to town meeting in the spring for some unanticipated overages, sometimes it's snow and ice. There are structural deficits like the legal budget, but sometimes there's police and fire overtime that's exacerbated by different events. So statutorily, we can go up much more, but I think trying to maintain budget growth to a certain level, I think I would, I would stick with the financial policy of, of budgeting it the way we have.
Thank you.
Okay, and when will the, at a certain point in the process, will the FY twenty-two and twenty-three actuals be included here?
Oh, so good question, so this looks like, it looks like we didn't spend any money, so this chart is actually the opposite, you don't actually spend any money from the reserve fund account itself. Anytime you use it, it gets transferred out, so it looks like we budgeted something. The amended budget, like, is basically, goes down to zero as you use it, because it comes out of here and goes to that apartment where the expenditure is actually made. So this chart, where it looks like the actual zero means we used all of it.
We used all of it.
So you can see that in twenty nineteen, we, I don't know why that says negative. Twenty nineteen, there was one year in the last few years where we didn't use all of it, and I think it just looks opposite here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's kind of a confusing one, because you can't actually see
Yeah.
the total amount.
The totals.
That were spent on it.
Okay.
Should we move to Town Hall?
Sure.
So Ann is going to do the honors for this one.
So the accounting department. Okay, so our mission and services, we are responsible for the weekly payroll and the accounts payable for the town, school, and for Shrek, we have a retirement office. We coordinate the yearly audit for the town, we oversee the ACRA preparation for the town, we also assist with the town's yearly budget. We submit all of the forms to governmental agencies. We manage the workers' compensation and unemployment, and we also provide staff support to the advisory committee and the audit committee. There is five people in department, myself, and four people, a town accountant assistant, a payroll specialist, the AP person, and a retirement administrator. Some of the key initiatives that we are focusing on, we just recently did a Munis upgrade. So we have a new Munis system that we're using, and we, well, new bu, new software, and we're, we've all been focusing very recently on how to use that system. So we have been training, and we're also trying to build institutional knowledge. We are also going to be implementing digital processes to increase efficiency, some of those are we're hoping we'll do with Munis, which would be to have other departments enter their invoices and us to do the auditing for those invoices, because sometimes we have up to four-hundred-and-fifty bills in our department. Because sometimes we have up to four hundred and fifty, um, bills in our department and it's, uh, it's just overwhelming. So, uh, it's hard to do for one person who has other responsibilities as well. So we're really trying to find ways to make that more efficient. Um, we also want to review the accounting records, the, the retention schedules. Some of the reporting requirements that we do. Is, um, the IRS, we do the W twos and the ten ninety-nines. For the mass department of revenue, we prepare the tax recap, we certify the free cash, we prepare Schedule A, which has basically. All your revenue and expenditures for everything that the town does, um, for all the funds. Uh, we prepare our quarterly taxes. Um, and we, um, uh, help, um. Enroll new employees. We also, um, prepare unemployment, quarterly wages. Um, for the ACRA, um, we have received the GFOA certificate for the past twenty-seven years. Um, to, you know, you have just heard about that. So thanks to that team who did an incredible job. And, um, the PERC, um, we, uh, for PERC for the, for the retirement fund, we have an annual financial statement. We handle all the retire, retirees, the new employees, the transfers, and the withdrawals. Or, um, if you want to, um. Look into the next, um, okay, so, so to explain the chart. Um, we have an increase in the budget. It's four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventeen. Uh, it's increased over eleven thousand, forty-three dollars, which is two point six five percent from the prior year. Uh, if you want to look to, um. Our. Personnel and expenditures. If you want to go by the, um, the increase in percentage change. Um, overall on our personal services, we have dropped two point four percent and that's mostly because. Um, our increase in the Shrek reimbursement that, um, Michelle just, um, referred to. And also because, um, we had a, um, a change in, um, the accounts payable person. So there was, uh, a lot of years and so the new person came in at much lower, uh.
Great.
Great, thank you. Um, like our expenditures, um, we did increase some of our expenditures in some areas, mostly to do with meetings and seminars. Um, and, uh, and mileage and things like that, and that all is related to training. Um, and that's because, um, there's, uh, going to be probably a lot more meetings that we're going to need to. Uh, there's an annual training seminar that, um, is at UMass Amherst every March. It's a three-day, um, accountant's, uh, training. And, um, the town accountant and probably the assistant town accountant will both go. And it's where you go to get certified and it's, um, a really great place to network and meet other town accountants and find out. Uh, how they do things and collaborate. So we think that's, um, very important, especially since we have a new munis system. So things like that are really very helpful.
Yes. Excellent, thank you. Well, thank you for jumping in. It's a lot of change. It's a big transition for us, um, but we, it, we, sure, I'm confident it will get easier. These systems and processes will, will help. I know it's a little painful right now, but, um. Now that it's implemented and we go through the process a few times, I, it's already, I mean, it's great to see it online and. Interactive, um, and I think it really does improve transparency. We'll be able to share it with residents. So. I'm thrilled to see it, but I know it's, it's a lot of hard work. Um, so thank you. Uh, do you have any questions about the budget specific?
I, I just had a question on the note under expenditures summary. The, uh, above where the four twenty-seven appears.
Okay.
Going up, there we go. So right, the last little note says that the actual budget numbers do not reflect encumbrances. So it may appear that department spent less. I don't understand what you mean by encumbrances here.
Sure, so, excuse me, we, we added this language to all these charts, just like kind of across the board. So encumbrances are things that are, um, carried over from one fiscal year to the next at the end of the year, typically because. Um, you have bills that are outstanding, but that you know aren't going to come in by June thirtieth, or you have. Something that's under contract or kind of in progress and you need to make sure the funds are available. So. Um, I'm not sure it's really the case for this department in particular, but in other ones, you'll see some big gaps. I think fire might have included some notes where. Um, you know, a capital project was in progress or, um, our, our communications proj, project or. Contract was still in process and we knew that some expenditure, uh, invoices were coming. So it looks like we didn't spend that money because we didn't spend it in the fiscal year. But we did end up spending, say it was FY twenty-three money, encumbered to the following year. So it, all we're trying to say here is that the. The actuals might be understated for that reason. If you included the encumbrances here, that means you've carried over that money, but you might not have spent all of it. So in that case, it could have been overstated. So we kind of had to make a choice and typically. When we've reported the actuals in the past, they haven't included the encumbrances. So we just wanted to flag. Um, I know like Chief Murphy in particular was worried that it would look like he didn't spend some of his capital money, but it's just because things were in progress and weren't. You know, it was carried over to the following year.
So would I, could I rephrase this that what we're seeing are, are basically cash accounting? And if we were on an accrual basis, these numbers would have been pulled in because basically the liability is accrued. Uh, but it's, the cash hasn't gone out. So these are cash numbers and you're just flagging the fact that it's really. Uh, there's a difference between the cash accounting and accrual accounting here. Is that the fair summary?
That's a good way to look at it, yes.
Okay.
Maybe we should update the notes if you think that.
Because encumbrance, at least to me, suggested, you know, that there was, um, a legal issue. There was something going on that. Okay, got it.
Okay, the next one is property, property liability insurance. Sometimes we call this general insurance. This is typically managed by the town accountant as well. At this point in the process, you just preliminarily budget this at ten percent higher than the FY twenty-four. Um, budgeted number. So this is the town's property and liability insurance for all town property, municipal and school vehicles, you know. Employee injuries or personal injuries, et cetera. So, um. That is something that we right now have budgeted at one point three-ish million. But we will be working with our insurance broker, Richardson, to get a better estimate of what the insurance premium may be for FY twenty-five.
Okay, so what, what is the timeline for getting that number?
Um, I'm not totally sure. We've started the process with them and, and part of that is trying to anticipate changes that are coming down the pipe. We've let them know that we have. A public safety facility that's in the progress of being, in process of being built, the, um, a new elementary school. So it's trying to anticipate. Those buildings coming online, any new vehicles, et cetera.
Okay.
So hopefully over the next month or so, but definitely before the budget, we'll have to put, um, something in with more certainty.
Okay, and it's health insurance. We usually get those numbers around March, right?
Yes, so.
But this is sooner.
You'll see something similar. We budgeted health insurance at ten percent. Just for now, it'll start the process. Um, this should be before, before the beginning of March, but we'll, we'll keep working with them.
Okay.
And then, so for this is property and liability.
Yes.
Is there an, an attempt to allocate this to, again, my question before to various departments? So for examples. School buildings are covered here. Um, is any of this reflected in the school budget?
This is not. So this is part of our shared services budget, along with things like all the employee benefits, the debt service, the capital, and this line item. Um, in the past, when we've tried to do like the full allocation, we've just kind of said fifty percent to the schools, fifty percent to the municipal departments, but. Um, it's been, we haven't broken it down by building and vehicle and stuff in the past. Um, I do know that the country club will be budgeting for property and liability insurance and the water, um, water enterprise does budget for their own piece of it. But those are the only two exceptions that I, that I know.
Got it. Thanks.
So these last two are also typically managed by our town accountant. So retirement, um. As Ann mentioned, we have a retirement administrator who works out of her office, but really reports to the, the retirement board. So this budget is our budget for our pension liability. Um, we have KMS, our, our actuarial, um, our actuary is KMS and they do a schedule for us. That they update each year. So this budget number right now. It's showing about a seven point two percent increase, but that comes straight from the, from the forecast, um, from the actuary.
So will that number be refined or that is what it is?
I believe this one is what it is based on the most recent study.
Okay.
What page is that?
It is, uh, thirty-five.
There we go.
And this is for the liability. This is not like the direct payment to folks right now. That comes from a different place.
Yes.
What is the retirement expense fund?
That I'm not sure about. It's not something that we budget. I've just seen in the past, small, um.
It existed and now it seems to have gone away. That's why I'm.
I don't think we budget for it. It seems like we've, we've paid some expenses from it. So that one I'll have to check with Marissa to understand our, our retirement administrator. What exactly that line item, like why we would pay someone out of there versus, um.
I mean, it's not a material amount. I just.
Yeah.
Didn't know what it was.
We'll find out.
No other questions?
Okay.
Okay, and the last one this evening is unemployment. This is unemployment compensation for employees. Um, we had, we had kept this at a certain level. For years and just based on some of the activity over the last few years, I know these, the spike during COVID. Um, but we were, we're proposing just raising it by ten thousand dollars this year, just to be in line with. The average over the last several years. It was closer to fifty thousand. So we just wanted to increase it by ten thousand. I believe that the town is, is self-insured for our unemployment.
Right, so we're not paying into a fund?
I don't believe so. Well, we're not paying any type of, we don't have like a separate insurance for this.
Right, right.
But this is definitely not my area of expertise. I'm not sure if fans were conversant in this, but we can certainly find out more. We do have a small fee for, um.
We pay for a service.
Yeah.
To bring people to process.
To process the claims.
Yep, okay.
I forget, um, the name of it.
Experian.
Is that the consultant service line? Yeah.
And we checked with them and that fee hasn't changed in years and they kind of said we expect it to be the same thing.
Okay.
That didn't work with our auditors.
Nineteen hundred is a much different amount.
I agree. Different situation. Okay.
No other questions?
Okay. Um, any questions or comments from members of the public on the budgets we've reviewed so far? Okay, very excellent. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Ann. All right, did you, you good? Do you want to add anything else? Okay. Um, all right, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the twenty twenty-four retail license renewals.
So we have a list I've reviewed and I'm prepared to move forward.
Okay, yes, so this is our, this is an annual exercise we go through. Um, and I spoke with Tom and Sharon and these are all complete, no concerns. Um, so I'm ready to, to move forward.
So I make a motion to approve the renewal of the common victular all alcoholic beverage licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well.
And I move to approve the renewal of the common victular wine and malt beverages licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well.
I move to approve the renewal of the common victular farmer series pouring permit for malt, for malt license as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well.
I move to approve the renewal of the retail package store all, all, all alcoholic beverages licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well.
And I move to approve the renewal of the retail package store wine and malt beverages licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the twenty twenty-four entertainment license renewals.
So I have reviewed the list and I am prepared to move forward.
Okay, so entertainment, this is, um, just so people know, this mostly refers to. If a restaurant has live, live music or some sort of entertainment happening on site. Um, and I have reviewed these applications as well. I'm ready to take a motion.
It does not include the select board going around and singing to people.
No, thank God. No one wants to see that.
So I move to approve the renewal of the entertainment licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the twenty twenty-four automatic amusement device license renewal.
There appears to be, uh, only one on our list.
Yes. Um, yes, actually, where is it?
It should be right here on our agenda.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, Lima Sports, yes, South Shore Sports Center. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I'm comfortable with that.
I am as well.
So I will move to approve the renewal of the automatic amusement device license as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. All right, next on the agenda is to cons.
Class one?
Consider approval of the class one and class two auto dealers license renewals.
Yes, so it's, I see, that Chevrolet Herb Chambers and Gallery.
Yes.
Comfortable with that?
Yes, I am as well.
So I move to approve the renewal of the class one and class two auto dealers licenses as presented for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Next are appointments. I would like to make an appointment. I will move to appoint Akash Shetty to be the student representative from Hingham. To the Human Rights Commission as recommended by the school committee to fill an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent, um, are there any other appointments?
No.
This evening, okay. Um, next is public comment. There any members of the public like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, move to town administrator and select board reports. Art?
Nothing for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
Nothing for me as well. Thank you.
Okay, Joe?
I just, this week concludes Hanukkah, so wishing everyone a happy Hanukkah.
Yes, happy Hanukkah. Um, and we were able to go to the menorah lighting last week at the community center, which was a, a lovely community event.
And there was a second, uh, lighting down at the shipyard, which was also a lovely community event.
Yes, so thank you to everyone that, that helped organize that, um, and happy Hanukkah. Um, Joe and I also, um, attended the school facilities tour over the weekend. Um, so got to see some of the upcoming, what some upcoming capital requests will be for the schools. Um, and I also had the opportunity to go to JR Hall and, um. Be with the VFW and the students, the student essay winners of the Voices of Democracy and Patriots Pen contests. Uh, which was so impressive, um, and just really, really nice opportunity to meet with those students that are so civically engaged and. Learning about civics and how to engage. learning about civics and how to engage with the community, uh, which is, is so important. So thank you to ev, all, thank you to everyone that helped uh, make that happen, and congratulations to all the winners. That's it for me. Anything else? Okay, um, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second, roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at seven twenty-two PM. Thank you.
Thank you.